How are you, Joe?
The brothers got one too. I used to give them a hard time. I had the bird on with this, so I can take you guys right now. Can you make the wheel squeal? I said, sure. If I get sixty miles an hour slamming it.
It comes on.
That's Scott, yeah, the new Scott.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to call the September 8th, 2020 Crest Hill City Council meeting to order. If everyone would please rise for the pledge allegiance to the flag, and if everyone would please remain standing after the pledge. My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Unfortunately, last Monday evening, the city of Crest Hill lost a very dear friend. Former First Lady of the city of Crest Hill, Betty Randich, the wife of Don Randich, longtime mayor of the city of Crest Hill. She was a wonderful woman, wonderful mother. She played her role as the First Lady very well also. So the city of Crest Hill would certainly like to thank her and her family for her years of service to the city of Crest Hill. I would also like to offer a moment of silence and offer our condolences to her three sons, Dana, Craig, and Todd, and their wives, and also to her husband, Don Randich, of fifty-five years of marriage. So I'd ask for a moment of silence in her honor. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Ray Solomon.
Here.
Scott Dyke.
Here.
John Frisché.
Here.
Barbara Schaller.
Here.
Glenn Conklin.
Present.
Tina Oberlin.
Present.
Claudia Gazal.
Here.
Marco Coladipietro. Nate Albert.
Here.
Joe Kubal.
Here.
Okay, I did receive a phone call from Alderman Coladipietro this afternoon, and due to prior commitments, he is unable to be here this evening. So he is excused. Moving on with the agenda, you have before you the minutes of the city council meeting held on August 17th, 2020. Motion would be in order.
No move.
Second.
We have motion by Alderwoman Sclaire, seconded by Alderwoman Gazal, for the approval of the August 17th Crest Hill City Council minutes. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Frisché.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Barbara Schaller.
Yes.
Motion carries.
You also have before you the minutes of the work session of August 24th, 2020. Motion would be in order.
So moved, Mr. President.
We have motion by Alderwoman Oberlin, seconded by Alderwoman Sclaire, for the approval of the minutes of the Crest Hill work session held on August 24th, 2020. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
John Frisché.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Barbara Schaller.
Yes.
Motion carries.
You also have before you the minutes of the Crest Hill work session held on August 31st, 2020. Motion would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
We have motion by Alderwoman Gazal, seconded by Alderman Dyke. Questions or comments in regards to the minutes of the Crest Hill work session held on August 31st, 2020? Roll call, please.
John Frisché.
Yes.
Barbara Schaller.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, we do not have a business promotion this evening, and I would like to ask council's concurrence to deviate from the agenda. We do have three guests here from the Daughters of the American Revolution, and each year they come before us in the month of September for a proclamation in regards to the Constitution of the United States. So I would ask for the reading of the proclamation from the Alderwoman from Ward Three and the two gentlemen from Ward Four first.
Proclamation, whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to rule by law, and whereas September 17th, 2020 marks the 233rd anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate it, and whereas public law, 915, guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week.
Now therefore, I, Raymond R. Solomon, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of Crest Hill, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week.
And urge all of our citizens to study the Constitution and reflect on the privilege of being an American with all the rights and responsibilities which that privilege involves and witness whereof. I have hereunto set my hand and cause the corporate seal the city of Crest Hill this eighth day of September, 2020. Raymond R. Solomon, Mayor.
So moved, Mr. President.
Second.
We have motion by Alderwoman Oberlin, seconded by Alderwoman Gazal for the proclamation for Constitution Week in the city of Crest Hill. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Frisché.
Yes.
Barbara Schaller.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Motion carries.
We have with us three ladies from the Daughters of the American Revolution. We have Pauline, Bobby, and Mary. So everyone, please join me at the podium. And as I stated earlier, that every year in the month of September, they come before the city of Crest Hill. We certainly want to certainly support the Constitution of the United States in its, what is it, 233rd year now? So the wonderful work that the Daughters of the American Revolution do, not only for the city of Crest Hill, but for the surrounding communities. And I will let Pauline explain a little bit more on the organization itself. They've been around for a long time. They're going to be celebrating their 100th anniversary in 2021, and we are certainly going to put together a resolution for them also at that time. But it's certainly my honor and my privilege to present you, Bobby and Mary also, a copy of the proclamation which was just passed by the city of Crest Hill.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You are welcome. The podium is all yours.
Thank you.
To Mayor Solomon and members of the Board of the City of Crest Hill, thank you for allowing the Louis Joliet Chapter of the DAR to come before you tonight to receive your proclamation to promote Constitution Week in your city from September 17th through the 23rd. I'm Pauline Herpe, Constitution Week Chairman, and these are fellow members, Bobby Today and Mary Earnhardt, who are, Mary Earnhardt's a longtime member. Bobby Today is a new member. We've been, we've had our chapter for how many years? Hundred and one. Hundred and nine years. Hundred and nine. Think how far back that goes. We didn't start. We weren't there then, but that's when it started, here in the Midwest. The purpose of the Daughters of the American Revolution is to perpetuate the memory and spirit of the men and women who achieved American independence in 1776. To that end, we promote the education of the Constitution in our schools, libraries, and city halls. As Abraham Lincoln said at the end of the Civil War, quote, "Our safety, our liberty depends on preserving the Constitution of the United States as our fathers made it inviolate." The people of the United States are the rightful masters of both Congress and the courts, not to overthrow the Constitution, but to overthrow men who pervert the Constitution. Good thing for us to remember these days, leading up to the election. Thank you very much for having us, and have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
See you again, see you again next year. Hopefully without masks.
Hopefully.
The only thing that I would say is kudos to Crest Hill because we are invited year after year consecutively to receive this. And so it means that it's important to you all. And thank you for your service to Crest Hill and the surrounding areas of Will County for just being there. And fifty-five years of marriage, and I don't know how many years this past mayor was in office, but you guys stand firm and know that you're cared for and you're loved, and thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any comments from city council?
Well, thank you for the kind words. We don't get them in nice, kind words. Thank you for all what you do, ladies.
You deserve some.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night, ladies. Thank you. Okay, moving on to our city administrator. Heather McGuire. Good evening, Heather.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I have just one item for approval this evening before you. This was discussed at last week's work session. This is an amendment to an ordinance, to Section 13.04.115 of the City of Crest Hill Code of Ordinances regarding equitable connection surcharge for extension of sewer or water stubs. Per the direction of city council, the last couple sentences were modified to state that equitable connection surcharges will be charged with a 5% interest rate, but only for extensions completed and projects for the city completed after today's date, which is the ordinance approval date, and that the city shall use its best efforts to notify the lot owner in writing that said stub was extended and give them the opportunity through the end of the calendar year to pay at the cost rate before that 5% surcharge is imposed. So with that, I would be seeking approval this evening.
So moved, Mr. President.
Second.
We have motion by Alderwoman Oberlin, seconded by Alderwoman Gazal for an ordinance amending Section 13-04-115 of the City of Crest Hill Code of Ordinances regarding equitable connection surcharge for extensions of sewer or water stubs. And again, this was discussed at length last Monday evening. Questions or comments?
Mayor, just one question, maybe clarification. Just reading the minutes, I thought it was kind of understood that we were going to go to 2.5%. Did I, I mean, in the minutes, it kind of states that. I didn't know.
I'm sorry. My understanding was that we would keep it at 5%, provided that we gave that notice in writing, but I'm happy to modify that if that was just my misunderstanding.
I recall those staying at 5%.
Okay.
Anybody else? Roll call, please.
Nate Albert.
I'm going to say no. I thought it was 2.5%.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Frisché.
I'll have to stay in our own property in the area.
Barbara Schaller.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Motion carries. Ordinance number is 1846.
What is it?
1846.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you, Mayor and council. That is the only item I had for consideration this evening. The report is on file, and I'm happy to answer any questions at this time.
Any questions of city administrator?
I have a couple questions. Is the $50 credit going to be up to date for September?
We are still working through the current test version of the software and making sure that we can go live with it. There will be some sort of notification, but before we confirm officially, we're working through the final stages of the software, which we will know by the end of this week.
So we still don't have definite answer?
It's likely that it will be, but before I say yes officially on the record, we wanted to run, finish through the test this week.
Okay. The second question I have here, I noticed in your report about the, that meeting on September 14th work session in regard the social media engaging. Who reached out to who?
I'm sorry?
The social media engaging. I noticed here on your report for the next work session.
It's a professional development presentation for the city council.
Oh, who reached out to who?
When you say.
Did they reach out to us, or we reached out to them?
We reached out through our network, through HR channels as part of the professional development tools that we want to offer to city council.
Are we paying for this?
We are, yes.
I think it's more important stuff than this. Maybe we need to start considering, like, putting economic development in a work session soon, so we can find out what's going on, where we at. I mean, I just heard that on the radio, we're told there's big development coming from the north, and the council's not aware of it.
I'm happy to put whatever topics you want. Obviously, the general topic of economic development is a little broad, but I'm happy to.
Well, pretty much all of them, you know. It's just, everything around us is building. We haven't got any updates. And I would like to know, what is the goals? What's going on? Why we're not having any economic development? Maybe we need to start thinking outside the box. Maybe as a group here, we need to start considering different avenue, different ways to figure things.
Sure.
I mean, I think, to me, that's more important than social media.
There are weekly updates in my report on economic development businesses that are opening or we are speaking with. So council has kept abreast of anything that we have information on. There are certainly some items that we don't even know at a staff level, that a developer will contact us with some anonymity and ask us for some specifics and tell us that they may be doing a deal soon, but we don't have any specifics on.
Yeah, but we just heard that he went on the radio saying there's a big project coming from the north, but the council doesn't know anything. And people started asking, what kind of development? I'm like, I don't know. What'd you hear on WGL? So.
We'll see.
Scott, didn't he go, I was told, from a resident? Yeah, he was on WGL giving a report about economic development.
And I'm happy to go back through my reports. Like I said, everything that he knows of, we do inform council through that report each week so that you are aware of anything that we know of at the time.
We could certainly ask him when he comes out, but I believe that those lots in front of the library were under contract for over a year.
Correct.
And that council was told that development was coming, and then COVID came along and it kind of pushed everything into a slow mode, stop mode, almost. But we can certainly ask Scott that question when he comes out for his report.
Yeah.
And I know that council was informed all along in the informational minutes, either of you or of Scott McMaster. Anybody else?
Yeah, Heather, I was wondering if we could have some time in executive session regarding that email on those properties? You said for us to discuss in executive session?
We're working on some more information before we bring that to executive session discussion, but that will be upcoming in a work session.
Okay.
Heather, kind of go along with what Claudia was saying. I noticed on the planning commission agenda, there's still the enterprise property that's on the agenda. Are they still going to present?
Not as of now, but while they are still working through their details, they were already set for the agenda. So that item will be tabled pending if they want to continue on. But as of right now, no, there will not be any official vote or any presentation by them that evening.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Heather. Next on the agenda is Public Works Department. If you can grab Mark. Good evening, Mark.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I have a few items before you on the agenda tonight. The first being the Hillcrest Water Main and Wilcox Storm Sewer Design Contract with Christopher Burke Engineering. As we spoke about last week, next year's Water Main project would be inside Hillcrest Shopping Center along with taking care of the chronic flooding on Theodore Street that we seem to have every big rain, along with replacing the storm sewer on the 1700 block of Wilcox and Oakland. I'd be looking for your approval for a not-to-exceed contract with a not-to-exceed amount of $144,495 with Christopher Burke Engineering.
And again, this was discussed at the work session, one of the two last week. Motion would be in order.
So moved, Mr. President.
We have motion by Alderwoman Oberlin, seconded by Alderwoman Sclaire to approve the proposal for the Hillcrest Shopping Center and the Theodore Street flooding in the rear of the shopping center for a price of 100, not to exceed a price of $144,495 with the approval of Christopher Burke Engineering. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
John Frisché.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Barbara Schaller.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Motion carries.
The next item I have before you is the Christopher Burke MFT salt bid contract. As discussed last week, having Christopher Burke fill out the motor fuel tax and the Illinois Department of Transportation Public Standards paperwork, having their professional engineer sign it to make sure we can go out to bid for salt this year. It'll be a not-to-exceed contract of $2,500. Per council's request, we did advertise on Thursday of last week, and the bids will be opened on September 23rd.
Again, this was discussed at one of the work sessions last week also. Motion would be in order.
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
We have motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderman Dyke for the approval of the salt bid contract for, to Christopher Burke Engineering, not to exceed $2,500. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Barbara Schaller.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
John Frisché.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Motion carries.
The next item I have before you is the 2020-2021 pretreatment implementation proposal. As you know, we're getting into the final steps of the pretreatment plan. Had a meeting about it last week. We should be hearing back from Jody Opie at the US EPA within the next couple weeks here. Robinson will provide Task One and Task One, which is on the following pages, for a not-to-exceed number of $70,000. They will be handling all the paperwork, the permit, and get us up and rolling that first year.
And again, this was discussed at the work sessions last week also. Motion would be in order.
Second.
We have motion by Alderwoman Sclaire, seconded by Alderwoman Gazal for the pretreatment, 2021 pretreatment implementation proposal awarded to Robinson Engineering for a price not to exceed $70,000. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Frisché.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Barbara Schaller.
Yes.
Motion carries.
The next item I have before you is the proposal from Robinson Engineering for design of the water main lining on Theodore Street between Clement and Oakland. As you remember, we had the large water main breaks there last year. It's more cost-effective for the line net section with Theodore Street being such thick concrete. This would be a design contract for a not-to-exceed amount of $26,000 with Robinson Engineering. So moved.
Second.
We have motion by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alderman Albert, correct?
Correct.
For the lining of the water main between Clement and Oakland on Theodore Street, awarded to Robinson Engineering, not to exceed $26,000. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
John Frisché.
Yes.
Barbara Schaller.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Motion carries.
The next item I have before you, normally we bring this bid before you at a work session, but due to time constraints, wanted to get this in front of council as soon as possible. We opened concrete sidewalk and curb replacement bids on August 31st. The engineer's estimate for the project was $178,603. Our MFT budget was $170,000. Davis Concrete came in at low bid at $122,473.50. Public Works is asking for council approval to award the contract for concrete replacement for curb and sidewalk to Davis Concrete and allow Public Works to use all $170,000 to get more curb and sidewalk done. As you can see, we can, with these additional funds, with the bids coming in low, we can do 400 linear feet of curb and about 2,080 square feet of sidewalk patching.
So moved, Mayor.
Motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderman Frisché. And Davis was their concrete user last year, correct? And it went without a hitch?
Yes.
Okay. Questions or comments in regards to the award for the concrete sidewalk and curb replacement bid awarded to Davis Concrete in the price of $122,473.50.
You already have ideas for the 2,080 square feet of sidewalk replacement you can do?
Yes, we hit Long Meadow and Siegel, and then we went, started on Boreo near the park, and then start, we hit the main stretch of Boreo, and we're going to start on the south edge of the Boreo subdivision and then work our way north.
Roll call, please.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Barbara Schaller.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
John Verche?
Yes.
Motion carries.
The last thing is informational. The, as many of you have noticed, the work on the Jasmine Creek has been completed. Good news is, we have gotten approval from the Will County Stormwater, Will County Stormwater Group. They will, as soon as September 15th hits, we will be submitting our bills to them, and we will be getting reimbursement from them. So, they asked us to wait to September 15th so they could clear up some administrative work on it. But, the work looks great, I think. I'm excited to see tomorrow, after we get, you know, after the full day of rain, to see what it really looks like. But hopefully, we can maintain that and keep those leads down as much as humanly possible.
Yeah, and Will County, that stormwater management group has been very kind to us for the past several years with the projects that we've done in regards to stormwater. So, questions or comments? Mark?
Yeah, I was just wondering, I had talked to Tom before he left, and I had asked him about the property next door. We got that retention pond there. Has anyone looked into that to see, you know, is that up to par, you know, the property we have right next door?
Next door here, or?
Yeah, right next door to City Hall here. The retention pond back there. Right off of that.
This is the first I'm hearing about it, so let me look into it.
I mentioned it to Tom earlier in the springtime to take a look into it.
Yeah.
I was just wondering, I don't know what he got done or if he did anything, so that's why I'm passing it on to you.
I will, let me, give me a week, and I'll look into it, see what's, see if there's anything going on with it, if it is up to code.
All right. And another thing, like with construction, like with the streets, like just, you know, with the Kelly project.
Yep.
You know, they sent a letter out, and they have no parking from seven in the morning to six that night, and they had no warning that at three o'clock in the morning, they have trucks out there laying oil.
Yeah.
And, you know, if someone would have parked their car on the street that night or whatever, I mean, it should have been something more of a heads up. There's nothing in this letter that says that for the residents.
Normally, and we, myself and the engineer and staff both had a long conversation with, with Austin Tyler about being out there so early. I understand that they want to get out there and get the oil down so they get a fresh, a good seal with the asphalt, but that was just, that was unacceptable with that early. So, they are going to make some, Austin Tyler, if they ever have a project with us again, they will make some changes to that, and our engineers now know that, hey, we need to, the day before, let them know that oil signs need to go out.
Right, exactly. I mean, they had the oil signs out, but it just says the week of September 3rd. Here, this was September 1st that we started.
Okay.
So, you know, it was beforehand.
And I'll reiterate to Burke.
There's nothing in there about, you know, that time of morning that they're going to be doing anything.
Right. So, I'll reiterate to Burke and make sure that they're, they're well aware.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Mark. Moving on to Community Development Department, our Community Development Director, Scott McMaster. Good evening, Scott.
Good evening. I do not have any agenda items, but I'm happy to answer any questions or address concerns.
Questions of Scott.
I noticed there's a new restaurant coming up. Chicago.
Chicago, yeah, that's been open for a while.
Chicago Chicken Shack?
Oh, yeah, I'm running with, yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
What is the status on that? You notice a sign?
Yeah, I don't, I, I don't know the date that they're opening, but they are inside working on the inside.
Okay.
Anybody else? Okay, thanks, Scott. Police Department, Deputy Chief Brad Hertzman, good evening, Brad.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. The police activity report is in your package. I do not have any agenda items, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions of Police Department.
Yeah, I have all one. How many community service officers do we have right now?
We have one that has been working for a couple of years now. The second one is still in training. In the last week was her first week to ride with the community service officer. So depending on how well she picks things up, we hope to have her released to full duty either in the next week or two. And then we'll have two.
Well, I'm just wondering, the reason I'm asking is, on Raynor Avenue, there's a Toyota SUV that's been there all summer long, with no engine in it and no plates, and it has never been tagged. Does he not drive up and down Raynor Avenue? It's so obvious.
What is the address?
You need an address that's on Raynor Avenue? I mean, if he can't find it on Raynor Avenue...
And it's a Toyota?
Yes. It's sitting there with no engine and no plates. It's been there all summer long. I've been watching and looking at this and wondering, how many other things? And there's two other vehicles on Raynor too, I know of. But, he should be able to see that, shouldn't he? Or do I need to report all the vehicles that are not complying?
I'll have him look into it.
All right. I was just wondering.
Any other questions? Okay, thanks, Brad. Mayor's report. We already handled the Constitution Week proclamation. We do have a second proclamation for National Rail Safety Week with Crest Hill having two at grade crossings and one above grade crossing. This is another proclamation that we do every year at this time. So I would ask for, first, for the reading of the proclamation, beginning with the four Aldermen to my right, from Ward 1 and 2. We'll begin with Alderman Verche.
Oh, excuse me. Whereas 2,220 rail grade crossing collisions resulted in 812 persons injured and were responsible, responsibility for the 294 fatalities in the United States during 2019. And whereas 1,111 trespassing included have occurred in the United States resulting in 579 pedestrians being killed and another 532 injured while trespassing on railroad property right away during the 2019 end.
Whereas educating and informing the public about rail safety, reminding the public that railroad right of ways are private property, enhancing public awareness of the dangers associated with highway rail grade crossings, ensuring pedestrians and motorists are looking and listening while near railways and obeying established traffic laws will reduce the number of fatalities and injuries, and...
Whereas the International Association of Chiefs of Police, National Operation Lifesaver, United States Department of Transportation, and all local, state, county, and railroad law enforcement officers, first responders, and railroad corporations commit to partnering together in an effort to educate at a national level all aspects of railroad safety to enforce applicable laws in support of the National Rail Safety Week.
Now therefore, I Raymond R. Salomon, by virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Crest Hill, do hereby proclaim the week of September 21st through 27th, 2020 as National Rail Safety Week. And witness whereof, I have here and to set my hand and house the corporate seal of the city of Crest Hill this 8th day of September 2020, Raymond R. Salomon, Mayor.
Motion will be in order?
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alderman Verche for the proclamation for National Rail Safety Week. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Barbara Schaller?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
John Verche?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you for that, and we will send a copy of the approved proclamation to the Canadian National Railroad for their records and their record keeping also. I accepted a letter of resignation from Tom Miggitts on August 20th, which I accepted. With that, we have to make a couple of changes for the good of the city of Crest Hill. We did discuss these issues at the work session that was held on August 24th with city council also. So, per that work session that was held on August 24th, I am seeking city council's concurrence to appoint Mr. Anthony Jalaska as interim director of Water and Wastewater effective retroactively to Monday, August 31st, 2020, at a salary of $30 per hour, not to exceed 29 hours per week. And I would ask for council's concurrence, and I would ask for a motion.
I'll say, oh, make a motion.
Second. And a motion by Alderman Verche, seconded by Alderman Dyke. Questions or comments in regards to the motion? Roll call, please.
Barbara Schaller?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
No.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
No.
John Verche?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
You know what, before we go any further, I just want to make sure on this, is this for interim only, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
For approximately three to six months as we continue a search for a director of city services.
So, motion carries.
Thank you. With that also, at the work session on August 24th also, or actually, that was on August 17th, the executive session that was held on August 17th, I am seeking city council's concurrence to appoint Mr. Mark Seifert as interim public works director, effective retroactively to August, and it was my mistake, August 21st, 2020, at a salary of $110,000. Motion would be in order?
So moved, Mayor.
Second. Motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderman Kubal. Questions or comments in regards to the motion? Roll call, please.
John Verche?
I would like to make some comments before I make a motion. And this is nothing against you all, because you have proved one of the best water sewer guy ever seen since I've been elected. This is just to protect you. We're setting the horse. It's just, it's crazy. So, the public work director, I mean, I'm sorry, sewer work director is going to move interim, temporary, temporary into public work. We're going to use him. We're setting him to fail because we were told he's not ready to be the director. So why we're doing this to him? You know? Why we're doing this before the election? Why we're giving raises right now when we said we're not giving raises? I mean, what happens if he doesn't work out, so he's going to lose his job?
All this was discussed in the executive session, so I'm just going to keep those com-
Exactly, executive session.
I'm going to keep those comments to myself that were handled in executive session. Those comments are yours. Anybody else? Roll call, please.
So I'm not going to get a response for anything? Are we looking up after a couple of months? Are we looking to hire another person? I mean, what is the status?
All I'm going to say is, all of those comments were held in executive session, and I'm going to provide the sanctity of an executive session.
So I can ask a question in a public meeting?
You can't get an answer, though. It's an executive session, nobody's got, nobody's got the minutes. It hasn't been settled yet, you can't do nothing about it.
But I'm asking other questions. I'm not allowed to ask any other questions?
You can ask all the questions you want.
But I'm not going to get a response?
And not if they pertain to executive session.
Mayor, can you give us a little bit more timeline here of what are, what we're looking at?
Again, same as the previous one, we're looking at three to six months as we continue a search for a public works director.
That was one of your questions, right, Claudia?
Yeah, well, basically, we're using him. You know, we're going to give him 15 grand, use him, and then what? But then we have, it just doesn't make sense to me to move a guy, hardworking guy, he does amazing with what he does, move him to public work, but then hire a temporary guy to cover his job. It just doesn't make sense. You know? Just doesn't make sense to me.
Anybody else?
You're not wanting to give him the opportunity to prove himself, and then after the election or before the election or whatever, I mean, I sat with both of you, that was an executive session. I can speak about things that are not an executive session. And I was lied to, I was told, no. You know? And now, we're putting him in this position.
Anybody else?
Nobody wants to answer my question, that's fine, but I have the right to state how I feel, and I think it's wrong what we're doing.
Roll call, please.
Well, I just kind of wanted to make a little comment here, too. I have to agree with Claudia on the fact that we're pulling him from where he's got his most knowledge, and putting somebody in there temporary, which, okay, so be it. But, you say three to six months. Now, at that, say that we do find someone for public works. At that point, the interim director of the Water, Wastewater is done, and Mark moves back to Water, Wastewater? I mean, before I vote on this officially, I want to make sure what we're talking about here, and I also want to make sure on the salary, that's for an interim director, but after the three to six months, that role is going to change. So, will the salary change at that point, too? Or will that be discussed at a later date? Those are my questions.
There are your second question, that will be discussed at a later date, and when the search is completed, depending on what the search produces, then we'll discuss that also.
Okay, because, let's say, on the salary increase for what's happening now, interim being the key word. Later on, when jobs change, I mean, because in three to six months, you do find someone, but maybe the job title's going to change in three to six months. Maybe it would be director, maybe it wouldn't be. Maybe it would be, oh, you're going to do part of this and part of that. And so, I just want to make sure that is definitely not what I'm voting on. It's only this interim position with this salary only being for interim.
Correct. And we will discuss the salary at a later date after the search is completed.
That's what I wanted to verify.
Discuss the salary for the position of public works director?
No. For Mr. Seifert.
I think Barb and Claudia are talking about the position, not so much the person. So, is the position of interim public works director the 110? And then, when we have a permanent public works director, that's going to be talked about?
Correct.
That salary.
Correct.
Well, I think they're asking about, what, is he going to go?
I'm asking about both, actually.
Is he going to go back to what he was at?
Yeah.
Or is he going to stay where, I mean, that's the question she's asking.
That we will discuss at a later date also.
Everything, they're going to get us for answer.
I think I answered it already.
Okay.
Heather, is there anything you'd like to add to this conversation?
Okay, and I think the questions have been asked and answered, is my understanding, unless anybody has anything in clarification on it.
Do you answer?
No, not really.
So the question that we're asking is, is he going to go back to, if he, if he doesn't get the position, so he goes back to where? Back to director of public work, sewer?
Well, we'll discuss that when the time comes. We have to see.
So you want us to vote, but we don't know what we're voting on?
But we need somebody in the position now. Correct?
The discussion, as I recall it, was that Mark would be stepping into the interim director of public works role. The discussion that we had was that we would go out for a search for director of city services, not for a director of public work. So Mark would maintain both departments, as he's been doing for some time now, continue to do that until we do a director of city services search. If that search produces a positive candidate, then we would bring that candidate forward to have discussion with city council, including salary and position title if anything needed to be modified. At that point, Mark would resume his title of director of public works, or, I'm sorry, I apologize, director of water and wastewater. He would not lose his job, depending on how the next three to six months work out. That was my recommendation, and I believe the mayor's intent as well. This is not a set markup for failure situation. It is that he is the best person to serve in that dual role, as we have done with many positions in the past when we've had vacancies. So he has agreed to do that and step in as he's been serving, helping to deal with the issues in the street department in the interim.
And, you know, and that's just what I wanted to make clear. I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with the interim, and the raise up to the interim, but, you know, we don't know, but again, I'm going to say it again, I know that you're going to be looking for city services. I know that maybe the job roles will change, maybe they won't be what we're thinking right at this moment. I mean, everyone knows that maybe you might have something in mind, but time passes and then a whole other set of scenarios come up, and maybe the job might be something totally different down the road, is what I'm saying. And what I want to, that's why I wanted to make sure, what I'm voting on is the three to six months for director of public works, three to six months only, provided we find someone at this salary. And then salaries would be discussed at a later date, for whomever would be public works, whomever would be city services. That's what I'm going to make sure, those salaries would be discussed later. That this right here is only for that three to six month period of time for the $110,000.
And I can certainly give my opinions and recommendations, but ultimately, that is up to the mayor's appointment as well as city council's vote. So I can only give you my recommendations and opinions on that. Ultimately, it's your decision on how you want to proceed.
Oh, no, I mean, and I understand that, because, you know, I mean, you never know. I mean, it could be a position that would require more than this amount. It could be a position that might require less than this amount. But, you know, that's why I wanted to clarify that, because I don't want to vote on something that's not here yet. You know, whether it be more for him or less, whatever the case may be, that's why I only want to vote on the interim part.
And that is certainly up to city council's discretion. My recommendation, I believe, and I will say this on the record as well, is that this is the consistent salary for both this interim role, as well as when Mark steps into his director of water wastewater position again, when he resumes that. So that is my opinion, my recommendation, but it's up to city council on how they want to vote on that.
And I, and I totally understand that, it's just, we're not 100% sure what's, what's going to come about in three to six months. There's no absolutes here. And that's how come I want to make sure, and what I'm voting on is just interim until we have a more clear cut, for sure, so-and-so's coming in, this is going to be their job, so-and-so's going to move here, that's going to be their job, this is this one's salary, this is, you know, a projected salary for this one and a projected salary for the other one. And that's why I want to vote on that, when that time comes, and this would only be interim for just that timeframe. Not, not just to stay forever, as is.
Well, she just said her recommendation was for the salary to stay.
I'm sorry, but she-
Yeah, and I apologize, because I misspoke. It should have, it was the same search for the director of public services.
She just said that she recommends that the salary stay the same. That's what she just said.
Yeah, you're not going to go back.
Doesn't go back.
Right. This position is during the search of the city services.
Yeah. Correct. That's my recommendation, but that is up to city council's vote on how you would like to phrase it, how you would like to approve that.
Is that going to be one vote or two?
We can split it into two, or we can make it one. I mean, it's usually cleanest to make it one with a vote to approve the interim position as well as the salary, but...
Because my vote will make, will make a difference if it's one vote versus two.
But that was part of the, that was part of the memo also that they received, was for the appointment and the salary.
Yeah, no, then, no.
Mayor, with the resignation of Mr. Miggitts, this, this is also going to lead to a transition this is also going to lead to a transition of the way that the whole department is structured, right? Is that, is that what you said there?
It may, yeah.
It may. So, but that's, that's, that's the consideration with both this interim position and the Director of City Services or Director of Water Waste Water. And that's, that's all part of the process.
That is correct. And just again, to kind of piggyback on that point, the recommendation to keep the Director of Water and Waste Water salary at that level once he resumes that role is that we will not be refilling or doing a search for a Director of Public Works position. Thereby, we would be eliminating that salary. Director of Water and Waste Water would be over that division on its own, without anybody above them.
So what you're recommending is that that salary of 110, remain at 110, even if it's not as a Director or a Public Works Director? You're saying that that's your recommendation?
Correct.
For the Director of Sewer and Water?
Correct.
But we're not even there, there yet. I mean, that's something that's got to be discussed when we actually fill the roles permanently.
Exactly, I mean, however city council wants to approve that and vote on that.
But you're, you're seeking a salary for his current role, if he rolls back to it, to be 110. Am I correct?
That's my recommendation, is that it stays and it's approved, and then that does not change.
Not that it stays, that it changes to.
Correct. That once he resumes that role, that it would stay at that interim Director of Public Works salary that would be approved this evening.
With the intent of restructuring the entire department.
Correct.
I just want to make sure that we're all clear with what we're voting on and what...
Yeah, and I'm, you know, and I have to be honest, I'm not 100% here. Because, you know, we're voting on something where we don't even have a person yet who may come in or may not come in to fill that role for City Services. And what that salary would end up being compared, you know what I mean?
And I certainly understand that, so we can hold off on making a permanent change to the Director of Water and Waste Water salary until we do and complete the search and have a recommendation for the Director of City Services, thereby fulfilling that restructuring, as Alderman Albert referred to.
Right, so we're only voting on this salary to stay for interim only, not permanent?
That's how I read the memo.
That's how the memos...
That's what I'm, I just want to clarify.
But she just said that it's going to stay.
But that's what I'm saying, you're saying it's interim.
But she just said that, her recommendation was to stay.
I'm saying that was my recommendation when we had this discussion initially. However, we can vote on that as city council wishes this evening to appoint Mark to the interim Public Works Director role with the interim salary of 110,000.
Right, that's what I want to vote on.
And that's what the motion in the second was, correct?
So, so if election, so if election comes and there is a new mayor, you know, he's a mayor, who knows what's going to happen to him? And this is what, I'm trying to get to the point, because we don't know. I mean, we might be here, we might not be here in a couple of months. You know, just let him continue doing his job. He's improving himself every day more and more. Give him retro after the election. Retro pay and give him the position what he deserved. That's the way to do it. Let him prove himself and give him retro pay from whatever, January, December. That's my opinion.
Okay, there is a motion in the second, correct?
Yeah, for confirmation, Nate Albert, were you first?
Yes.
Okay, and Joe Kubal was second.
Okay.
Just for confirmation, I want to make sure I got that clear. Joe, correct?
And just for the record, I'm basing off of what the memo says. There's nothing, there's nothing at all listed about the Director of Water Waste Water. This is just the salary for the interim Public Works Director.
Correct. Retroactive to August 21st, 2020.
Yes.
August 21st or 31st?
21st.
Okay, I got the wrong dates, all right, okay.
Roll call, please.
John Brashay?
Can I ask you a question? Is this the same one I had voted on before? Doesn't sound like it is. Is this on the salaries, or is this on the person to fill that position?
Both. Both.
Okay, you know, we got a, we got a foreman back there, he's been here for a while. He should know what he's doing. He should be experienced enough. We had a foreman run the place for I don't know how many months once before, and it ran good. I personally, nothing against Mark, but I don't think he has, knows the knowledge, enough knowledge to run that department, so I'll have to vote no at this time.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Claudia Gazzal?
No.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Barbara Sclair?
As long as we're not voting on a permanent salary here, I'm okay with it.
So is that a yes?
And then we are not, correct?
Not.
Okay, as long as it's not going to be a permanent salary.
It is permanent.
It is permanent.
Then, then no, if it's a permanent salary...
No, no, no. I said, based off of what the memo says, which is the position of the Public Works Director. That's where we need clarification. Is it just for the interim Public Works Director at 110? Not anything to do with Water Waste Water Director?
All the motion is for tonight.
Correct, that's my understanding of what the motion just did, was to, as the interim Director of Public Works, appoint at a salary of 110 for that position during the term of that position.
So whoever serves as the interim Director of Public Works will get this salary.
Then as long as that's the case, then yes. Because I want to vote on salaries later on down the road.
But you're not, you're already voting on the salary.
No, this isn't about salaries down the road. It's only about interim for the three to six months, correct?
That's why I'm voting the way I'm voting, that's why I made the motion.
They just told you they're not going to go backwards, it's going to stay the way it is.
We got two different things going on down the road.
Alderman Albert, you're correct, that is for the position as appointed while that position is appointed. When Mark resumes his role as Director of Water and Waste Water, we will discuss his salary going forward at that time. This is only for the temporary appointment of Mark Seifer to Director of Water and Waste Water for $110,000 while he is in the interim Director of Public Works title. Is everybody clear?
You are.
Right, and then, and then Mark's salary will be determined at a later date. That 110 does not stay permanent, correct?
Correct.
Then I'm okay with it.
So is that a yes or a no?
Yeah.
Tina Oberlin?
And I want to reiterate a lot of the things that were said, because I agree that Mark is very good in the role he is in. I do not understand any of what transpired or the processes that we're or we're not used to do all this, the lack of anything explained to the council. The whole thing, to me, was a Donnybrook. And I think Mark is a very dedicated employee, and I also do not want to see him set up for failure. I think he should remain where he's at, so I'm voting no.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, congratulations, Mark, thank you. There are all the agenda items for the mayor. One thing I would like to reiterate is the census enumerators. If you have not already filled out, your census will be out until September 30th, knocking on doors, so I would ask for your cooperation, either with the enumerators or online, to fill out the forms or online fill out the forms, because every person does count in the city of Crest Hill for the census. With that, that's the end of my report. Any questions of the mayor? Moving on to the, City Clerk's report. Vicki Hatton, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have no items on the agenda this evening. I do have an announcement to residents that the city of Crest Hill petition packets for the April 6, 2021 consolidated election will be available for pickup beginning Tuesday, September 22nd, 2020. Nothing before that, on that date, only starting that date. Petition packets can be picked up at City Clerk's office. Our hours are 8 to 4:30 PM. And petitions must be filed between December 14th and December 21st. Crest Hill residents will be voting on the following offices. Mayor, one office, four term. City Clerk, one office, four-year term. City Treasurer, one office, four-year term. Alderman or Alderwoman, Ward 1, one office, four-year term. Alderman, Alderwoman, Ward 2, one office, four-year term. Alderman, Alderwoman, Ward 3, one office, four-year term. And Alderman, Alderwoman, Ward 4, one office, four-year term. Information is also on Facebook, will be put on the website. Any questions, please feel free to call our office. That's all the information I have this evening. I'd be happy to answer any question at the Clerk's office.
Questions of the City Clerk. Thanks, Vicki.
Thank you, Ray.
Moving on to our City Treasurer, Glenn Conklin. Good evening, Glenn.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'd like to report regular overtime payroll from August 3rd, 2020, through August 16th, 2020, in the amount of $224,607.37. Regular overtime payroll from August 17th, 2020, through August 30th of 2020, in the amount of $218,615.07. I seek your approval on the list of bills, that's my only action item, which during that timeframe totaled $1,928,128.54.
Someone just presented.
Second. Motion by Alderwoman Oberlin, second by Alderman Albert. For the approval of the list of bills, questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Brashay?
Yes.
Barbara Sclair?
Yes.
Claudia Gazzal?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you all, any questions?
Questions of City Treasurer. Thanks, Glenn.
Thanks, and good evening.
Unfinished business, we have nothing, anyone? New business, anybody?
I'd like to have something added to a work session in the future. I was going to another community, and they had a sign out. It involves with the police department and that. And I'm going to give a copy to the police department, also to Heather, and see about getting this on for a future date. It's a nice sign, it's how people have been breaking in cars, not being locked. So it says, lock it or lose it. It has on there, see it, hear it, report it with the police number. I think that might be something that would be nice, you know, to have.
And I don't want to preempt you, only because we have a safety grant through our SWR, which is our risk management agency, that we're able to purchase some items that help eliminate some liability items. And one of those traffic signs is one of the items that we're actually looking at purchasing this year. So I'm happy to add that, but we are looking into using that safety grant money for that.
Thank you. Okay, committee liaison reports, anyone? City council comments, positive city council comments? Anything you'd like to share with your constituents? We'll begin with Ward 4 this evening, Alderman Kubal.
Nothing at this time, Mayor.
Alderman Albert?
No, just Scott reminded me, though, that to, just remind residents, whenever they see anything suspicious, just call the police. I mean, oftentimes, they'll call us as older people when there's, you know, police-related issues. You're not bugging the police, just call the non-emergency number, and they'll come out and check it out. And also, we always forget when it's a holiday week, but garbage is picked up a day later this week. So when we get the phone calls later that says, where's my garbage? It comes a day late, so, just a reminder.
Ward 3, Alderwoman Oberlin?
Nothing at this time.
Ward 2, Alderwoman Gazzal?
Nothing, Mayor.
Alderwoman Sclair?
Nothing tonight.
Ward 1, Alderman Dyke?
Nothing at this time.
Alderman Brashay?
Nothing at this time.
Okay, public comment. Anyone who'd like to address city council, please step to the podium. Please state your name for the record, your address is optioned.
Do those come up?
One at a time, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council. I'm Steve Kemenetz, I live on Kelly Avenue. Glad everybody's doing well and staying healthy during this tough time, you know, and commend the police department, been doing a great job, you know. Everybody looks so nice, but nobody looks as nice as you, John, nobody. So, and Mark, congratulations. But I, we have a problem here, as you know.
Give me your name.
I did.
Hello, I can hear you.
You didn't hear that, John? Steve Kemenetz, John.
Bad doctor.
Yeah. Some cute girls, truck fully journeyed. But anyway, we have a, that storm issue that's, okay? I take it that we cannot connect to the main between my house and Letty's house because a neighbor will not sign off to go into the easement, okay? And that you need a signature, correct? Okay, we need a signature. Why can't we get this signature? Because my house, my pump constantly runs, her house floods when the ground is so hard. We're taxpayers in this community, something needs to get done. Or I do have an idea. I'll take my excavator, I'll go right in between the property line, and I'll tie right into that thing, run right out to the storm sewer. Am I allowed to do that? It's my property.
No, sir.
Oh, why aren't I allowed to do that, Mr. Mayor? You don't need to call me sir, Ray, I work for a living. You know, I'm all about that, so why can't I do that? Then it needs to get done.
You're absolutely right. And the city is bending over backwards to try and get it done. But unfortunately, back when those houses were built in the 1950s, the way it was set up was the alley, the so-called alley in between Kelly and Wilcox is owned by each and every resident on both sides. And in order for the city to solve the problem, which we want to solve the problem, we want to do the work, we got everybody's signature that was needed, except one.
I never had to sign nothing.
You didn't, because it already extended past your house. So every, everything from where it was, correct, Mark? From where, yeah, if you can explain this? But we did reach out to everyone that needed to sign the agreement, and only one person refused to sign it.
Mr. Dyke, did you have to sign an agreement?
No, no, I didn't.
What are we talking about here?
Go ahead, Mark.
So, Mayor and Council, as you remember, there's 19 houses on that block of Kelly and Wilcox. The original five that were built, which would be the first three, the last two, one, Wilcox, those were the original five built, in their language that they signed for the plat of easement, they did not allow the city to put a pipe in, in their, in the alleyway. After those five houses were built, the neighborhood was re-subdivided. And in the following 14 plat of easements, or plat of surveys, which included Mr. Dyke's house and your house, it gave the city permission to put pipes in the alleyway. Therefore, we just needed the signature of the five original homes of that block, which we have the four, like Mr. Mayor said, we have the original four, there's one holdout. So Mr. Kemenetz and, I'm sorry, forget your name. Mrs. Gomez, they did not need to sign, along with Mr. Dyke, did not need to sign, because when they bought their home, and when their home had plat of easement done, it was already gave the city permission to do the work. It's just those original five homes on Wilcox before the neighborhood was re-subdivided.
Thank you.
Mark, let me ask you a question. Why can't we, why can't we put that sewer, put it up to the west, half, half the alley, Mark?
That's right.
Because that's not how the alley is set up. It's, you don't own the seven feet behind you.
You own the whole thing.
No one person owns one piece. Everybody on that block is 1/19th owner of every square foot. So if you took every square foot and divided it by 19, every person's 1/19th owner of every square foot. So Mr. Dyke, even though he's on the corner, he's at 1701?
1700.
1700, I'm sorry. He owns, Scott is an equal owner behind his house and an equal owner behind 1716. So no one, the way that these were set up, well before, you know, the city was incorporated even, was, was this is how it was done, and this is how they set them up. They were, they were, these alleys were put in for the betterment of the neighborhood.
And that's all the way from Rayner to Broadway?
Yes. It's all the, all the Stern Park Gardens had, we hunted and searched in all the different records, and all Stern Park Gardens has these different, different little areas where they have different easement descriptions. So the, it's not like, and I understand, if we could just go on their side of the block, you know, we could run down that, that side. But the people on Wilcox own as much of the Kelly side as the Kelly side owns on the Wilcox side.
The pipe has already been placed in Ludwig Avenue, correct?
Correct.
Needs to be attached to. What I would suggest is the homeowners need to contact the owner of the property that did not sign.
I have tried a couple of times, and there's no communication or response from the owner. I did speak also to the renters that are renting the location.
Please come to the podium. Are you Letty?
Yes, hello, everyone.
I did try calling you back like three times, and you did not return my call.
Yes, I only heard one message, and I wasn't able to call back.
Okay.
But I am Letitia Gomez, I'm the resident at 1716 Kelly Avenue. Like I was stating, I did reach out to the homeowner on Wilcox, and he's not returning my calls. I did speak to the renter that's renting the location. And at first, she did say that she was going to give me the information and where he's at. But now that I've gone a couple of times to knock at their location to retrieve the information, they're not opening the door. So there's no communication there.
We need the owner of the property. It's a rental property, so we need the owner of the property to sign the document.
Right, and the person that's renting the house knows the owner of the property, but she's no longer trying to communicate with me or open the door so we could have a civil communication.
Right.
So I have no idea what's going on. I'm always getting flooded, to the point where my house is getting ruined.
I've seen the videos, most of us seen the videos. We understand the problem, we want to fix it.
Yes, and I understand that. Yes, and I understand that.
We allocated the monies to fix it.
Yes, and I totally understand that.
We put the pipe in the ground on Ludwig to tie in.
I get it, and I understand.
But this gentleman is holding the whole project up, and I know you're upset, but you should not be upset with us.
No, I'm not upset, I'm not upset with the City of Crest Hill, I just want this resolved.
So do we.
If there's any way possible that we could do it any other way, if we could look at other contractors to see if they could come up with a solution, because at the end of the day, this is my house. You guys are aware of the situation, so this is negligence on the City of Crest Hill because you guys are aware of the situation and what is happening to my home. I do pay property taxes, I'm not behind on my bills, so I need some answers, because at the end of the day, it's my land, my home, my interest, my investment.
Correct, and we cannot go to the south because it's at the wrong grade.
That's not an answer that I want to hear at this moment, because I am paying for this home. My home is getting ruined. It's not your home that's getting mold-infested, it's not your home that's foundation is sinking in from all the floods. It's my home. I have children there, and I'm going to have a newborn grandbaby there, and this is not a home where it's getting flooded all the time. My house insurance got canceled, I had to get a different house insurance plus a flood insurance for a zone that is not flooded. So I need answers, I need to know what's going to happen, who's going to resolve this issue. Public Works is aware about it, Sewer and City is aware, this is not the first flood, this has been happening since last year.
Mm-hmm, and again, the city wants to fix the problem.
Okay.
But we need the signature of the owner of the property who refuses to sign it.
Well, city needs to also send someone to that homeowner, city needs to communicate with that homeowner by letter, by mail, by certified.
The city, the city did contact the owner.
So then, I have no idea right now.
He wants, he wants a sum of money from the city, or his little purchase of property.
What is the money amount that he wants from the city?
I'm not going to discuss that.
Because if it's something that I, or we could all, we need to fix, it's affecting everyone in the neighborhood. It's not only affecting me, it's affecting the neighbor down the street, it's affecting Steve, it's affecting me, it's affecting my other neighbor down next door to me, it's affecting the whole block and just one person.
That's right, and that's the way...
One person.
And, and I live on Clement Street, and my alley is the same way.
So the majority votes, one person, he's the only one, everyone else wants this stuff.
And we did seek legal counsel on this, and legal counsel did tell us that we, we do not have the right to dig on that property without his permission, so we are the skeleton.
So then, why can't we approach the, what Steve said, between our properties?
What I'm trying to say is 1/19, but if we own, if that alley is split right down the middle, right?
The alley's not split down the middle, Steve. All 20, all 19 or 20 people, whatever it is, own that alley.
Okay, now...
Every alley is the same way.
Okay, Roger that. Now, but we're, we're always changing ordinances and amendments, why can't you change the ordinance for a week? We're always voting on stuff, and we're always voting on stuff just to change stuff without taxpayers.
You got to think about all of us, we're all getting damaged.
Mark, what, $120,000 for three months or six months?
110, to be exact. So, come on, guys, I need, we need this settled, my house is getting destroyed.
Letty, we would certainly, Letty, we would certainly like to sit down with you privately and have a discussion with you in regards to this.
Please, please do so, because this is...
And we could certainly have you here at City Hall one day.
Yes.
And we could discuss maybe more privately and give some information.
Yes, because my house is getting ruined.
I understand that.
The back part of my house where all this water is going through, because it's going through a river.
Right, and I hope you understand that we did not foresee that this was going to be a problem. That is why the pipe was put in on Ludwig Avenue to tie right in.
And that's the reason why I did not reply back, because I did send you guys an email with video, with pictures. I addressed everybody in this office with that email, and I did not reply back because I saw action from the city. The city was doing what they were supposed to do. Now all of a sudden it stopped, and it's going to affect my house if it continues to rain.
I understand that.
So yes, I would like to sit down with you and discuss this a little bit further, because my home, please.